If I could have your attention please, it's time that we get going. Our invocation tonight will be by Lieutenant Shawn Sims of the Erlanger Police Department. Good evening Lieutenant, thanks for doing this.
Thank you Mayor, it's my honor. We bow our heads. Heavenly Father, as the leaders of our community gather this night to bear both the burden and the duty of stewardship over our fair city, we ask that you grant them wisdom, discernment, and a sense of purpose divinely inspired. May you give them the courage to act boldly upon what this wisdom reveals unto them this day. Help them to render fair and enlightened decisions that will provide a safe and prosperous future to our community. They have sworn to serve. We give thanks unto you Lord for our forbearers, those courageous men and women that have come before us, those that have struggled and sacrificed all so that this our great nation of freedoms endures. We shall not take lightly the oaths of duties of our office that their inspiring sacrifices have provided for us. We ask all this in faith believing in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I call the June 3rd, 2014 meeting of Erlanger City Council order. Ask you please rise while we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Ms. Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore.
Present.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle. Ms. Cahill. Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have nine, we have a quorum. We may proceed. You should have reviewed the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 6th, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none is there a motion that they be adopted? Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Ms. Pitts, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we have some special presentations. Ms. Hopkins, Grateful Life Center.
Tonight I stand before you so that we can all recognize the existence of a vital operation within the city of Erlanger. The Grateful Life Center is managed by Transitions Inc. and tonight we have with us the Executive Director of Transitions, Mac McArthur, and Charlotte Wellington, undoubtedly the premier treatment and recovery advocate in the entire tri-state. The Grateful Life Center story goes back almost nine years ago now. Perhaps many of you remember the contentious Board of Adjustments meetings held within this very room. It was standing room only, and when all of the neighboring cities were saying no to Transition, no to Transitions, the leadership here in the city of Erlanger, particularly that of then Police Chief Mark Fields, said let's take a step back and look at truly what would be the impact of allowing such an organization like Transitions and the Grateful Life Center to call Erlanger its home. So after Chief Fields polled the beat cops in Louisville where the healing place is located and which our own Grateful Life Center is modeled after, he came to the realization that indeed the rumors about increased law enforcement call volume, decreased property values, and a myriad of other issues that led to the "not in my backyard" stance by many of our residents was completely unfounded. After making the public aware of his findings, the Grateful Life Center came into being. Tonight we recognize Transitions with Mac as their more than competent and compassionate leader, and Charlotte for whom we thank graciously for her tireless efforts in assisting those in need and those seemingly beyond the point of no return, and mostly for getting Casey's Law for substance abuse intervention passed not only in the Commonwealth of Kentucky but also in Ohio and Indiana. We recognize the Center's fifth anniversary of serving the people of the Commonwealth and returning a good number of those citizens to productive lives having lifted the burden of their addictions from their souls. Now to provide you with some of the current trends and usage of the programs that Transition offers, in 2013 alone, they provided more than 141,000 days and nights of residential care collectively. They served over 600 detox clients. The Center graduated more than 146 into their sober housing units, and they have I believe 74 apartment buildings that they can get residency in as they return back into society. They hosted outpatient visits of greater than 17,000, and they served more than 832 outpatient clients. The numbers are staggering and they're consistent over a period of years. Now I'd like to turn the podium over to Charlotte so that she can briefly share her story and Casey's Law with us.
Would it be okay if I stand over here? Is that alright with everybody?
We need to get you up, you can move the microphone toward you.
Okay. Can I move it around like this? So because I feel like I've got my back to everybody when I'm standing the other way. Okay, sorry. That's okay. Oh, this alright. Can we take this out? Yeah. Okay, let's do it this way. I am Charlotte Wellington, I'm a recovery advocate for Transitions, but before that and what I will always be is Casey's mom. And this is a picture of Casey I brought with me tonight so that we can put a face on the people that Transitions serves. Because I think a lot of times people have a stereotypical idea of just what a person who is addicted looks like. This is the face of someone who was addicted to heroin. And Casey is the person that brought me to Transitions and brought me to being an advocate. I said Casey died and an advocate was born. I never aspired to be an advocate. That was not in my plan. I was a teacher. For 27 years I taught in the Kenton County School System and retired. I had no idea what was going to be coming after that until addiction came to our house. And when it did, I can tell you I was not prepared any more than a lot of our families are prepared today. But as you all know, more and more families are being affected by this disease. I knew nothing about the disease of addiction, and I was very ignorant as to what was available, accessible, and affordable to our son. We live out in southern Kenton County, and I thought because Casey came from a two-parent family, because he was loved and cared about very much, because he knew about the dangers of drugs, because we talked about it, because he was smart, because we had those family dinners together, because he was taken to church and Sunday school, for all those, because he was a good person, for all those reasons and more, I did not think that addiction would ever touch our lives. But it did. And so what I learned very quickly was that addiction does not discriminate, it does not care who you are, where you live, how much money you have or don't have, and it is an equal opportunity disease. I thought as a youngster that Casey was just a little boy that liked to take risk. I didn't see that as a warning sign for addiction, but it is actually a warning sign, the risk-taking behavior. He also had the genetic component because we had some substance misuse on both sides of our family, and I didn't realize how that was going to be a setup for Casey for the disease of addiction, but it was. So with the risk-taking behavior, the genetic component, and with the availability, accessibility, and affordability of drugs, it just happened. It happened to us. And it happens to more and more people every day. Casey went to the school that I went to where I taught, and I could keep track of his friends very easily. I knew his, the parents, brothers or sisters of his friends. And so I was that parent that tried to be in his business from the time that he started school and started interacting with other children all the way through high school. But you know, the one thing that we know is that you can do everything possible and it can still happen to you. You can be the best parent you know how to be, and it can still happen to you. I know that sometimes people will say, well, if their, if their parents had just been doing their job, if they'd just been stricter with their children, that wouldn't have happened. Maybe not, but then maybe it might have. I told Casey at one point that maybe I should have been stricter with him, and he said, "Mom, it was never about you guys, it was always about me. I would have found a way." So in that sense, he was telling us that that risk-taking behavior had gotten him into trouble. Casey graduated from, oh well, he went to Twin Huffle Middle School, and it was at that point that I began to have some ill feelings about Casey and not being able to keep close enough contact with the people that he was associating with as he was getting older, and I wasn't at that school where he was in middle school. And then he moved on to high school, and those feelings became stronger of, there was just something that just wasn't quite right. The one piece of advice that I give everybody that I talk to regardless of who it is is that if you think something is wrong, there probably is. Do something about it now. Because I was that parent that had that gut feeling. I just knew in here, in my knower, that something was going on, that something was going on with Casey. But I couldn't put my finger on it, and I didn't want to accuse him of doing something that he wasn't doing. I wanted him to think that I trusted him, I believed in him, only thought the best of him. I regret that now, but it's too late. But like I said, that is the one piece of advice. I never tell people exactly what to do because I am not an addiction specialist, I am not a counselor. I am a mom who's lived through addiction with my son, and that's where my experience and my knowledge comes from. So Casey graduated high school, he went on to the University of Cincinnati. We didn't see him as often, but before he graduated high school, he went to, I sought out counseling for Casey. And the counselor said, "I think he's the kind of kid that likes to walk on the edge, but I don't think he'll ever go over the edge." He was wrong. I took that as a guarantee, which was very naive on my part. Casey went on to University of Cincinnati and lived at home for a while, but we didn't see him as often, so I didn't know about the progression of his drug use, but it did progress. You know, that's the thing about addiction. If you have that brain that is set up for addiction, it's going to take you down a path that you can't return from once you start. And that's what I tell children that I speak to in schools. The only way that you'll know that you'll never become addicted is never to use that first time, because you don't know if you're going to have the brain that says, "Aha, I like that and I want more." But Casey was predisposed to the disease of addiction, and so therefore when he used that first time, not knowing he was going to become addicted, he ended up becoming addicted to drugs. And that's the thing, you know, nobody sets out to plan to be addicted. Nobody takes that first drink, or smokes that first joint, or uses any kind of substance that alters the brain thinking, "Well, if I do this, I'm going to become addicted, I'm going to become an alcoholic." That's not the plan, that's never the plan. Casey made a choice the first time, but when he became addicted, his choice was over. And I think that's something we all need to understand about the disease of addiction, that it ceases to be about choice. It's no longer about choice, it's about having to do something to be normal. Dr. Anora Volkov will say, "It ceases to be about being high for someone who's addicted" and becomes more about being normal. In fact, Casey said that to us when we finally got, well, when he decided that he wanted to go for treatment, he stood in our kitchen one day and said, before we took him to Falmouth, he said, "I just want to be normal." He had gotten to a place that he didn't know how to get back from. And so like I said, his drug use progressed, he did get to the point that he asked for treatment, and that's what everybody had told me had to happen. They told me three things had to happen before Casey would get help for his disease. One, he had to want to. Two, he had to lose enough. And three, he had to hit bottom. So when he called to say that he needed help and he was going to come home, I told him that that's, that was good and I would come and get him, and he said, "No, Mom, I'll come home in the morning." That next day when he came home, the first place he called was Transitions. He called Transitions Drogi House. And they told him the same thing that day as we have to tell people today. There was no bed for Casey. And they said that, you know, to call back, to keep calling back. But you know, telling someone who is addicted to call back would be like telling someone who's having a heart attack, "Take two aspirin and call me in the morning." Because sometimes that person may overdose and die before the bed becomes available. Because a person who's addicted will do anything they have to do to avoid being in withdrawal. That is the thing they fear the most because it's a very painful and terrible condition to be in. So they will use to avoid going into withdrawal. Casey did get into the Falmouth Drug and Alcohol Treatment Center, and he stayed there for six days, and after that, he left against medical advice. But they said that they couldn't hold him because he was of age and he had to make the decision to stay. You know, we tried, well, I'll go on and tell you, Casey overdosed not once, not twice, but three times. After he left the center, his first overdose was in May, and he was put on life support, but he recovered from that. The second time he overdosed, he was with someone who knew CPR and got him to the hospital calling 911, and he survived that one. The third time, he did not. He was taken to University Hospital in a car, not by ambulance, and he was in a coma for nine days, or for 10 days. He was taken in on the 9th of August, and he was in a coma for 10 days. We let him go on the 19th of August in 2002. You know, it was then and only then that we were allowed to make a decision for Casey. Before that, again, they told us he had to make the decision. He had to want to. He had to lose enough. And he had to hit bottom. Well unfortunately, Casey did all those things. He did want to get better. He did lose enough. I think losing your life is enough. And he definitely hit bottom because Casey is now at Spring Grove Cemetery. So at the point that he was in the hospital in the coma, we were allowed to say that we wanted a feeding tube, we wanted a cage in his lung to capture any blood clots that might develop, and then finally the ultimate decision that we wanted to turn off the life support. Of course, we did not want to have to do that, but we were given no choice at that point. You know, if our goal is for people to recover, we have to keep them alive in order to do that. Because at the point of death, there's no hope for any kind of recovery. You know, that's the point of, part of the Senate Bill 5, which is about the expansion of naloxone. Naloxone is a substance that are, a drug that can be used, medication I guess I should say, a medication that can be used to reverse an overdose. And so right, as it stands right now, it can only be prescribed to the person who is at risk. What Senate Bill 5 would do would be to expand the use of that so that third parties could have it and be able to use it to reverse an overdose, and would, there would be also a good Samaritan clause where that person would not be liable if they're trying to save someone's life. You know, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about that, whether it's a good thing to do that or not, because are we giving them permission to continue to use? I can tell you that anyone who is addicted does not need permission to use. They are not looking for a way to reverse their overdose because they have searched all day long to try to get the money, get the drug, and use it. They don't want anybody to interrupt that feeling. So you know, that's, people are going to continue to use despite, as Dr. Volkov will say, she's the Director of NIDA, the National Institute on Drug Abuse, people will continue to use despite catastrophic consequences. These are not little consequences. Casey overdosing once wasn't a little consequence. Overdosing twice wasn't a little consequence, but it didn't stop him from overdosing the third time. So I, I hope that, that the Governor will see fit to enact some of the parts of Senate Bill 5 so that we can continue to save lives for another day so that they can recover. You know, one of the, I heard something on TV today, it was on Oprah actually, and they were talking about Ryan White, and his mom was saying how she wished that there had been a cure, that it happened in time, or not a cure, but, but ways of treating people with AIDS sooner, because, and that she had done so much as far as AIDS awareness and education because she never wanted her son to be forgotten. We never wanted Casey to be forgotten either. And one way that we felt like that we could keep Casey alive was to enact legislation that would address some of the barriers that we had faced when trying to get help for him, and one of those barriers had been his age. Because of his age, we were not allowed to intervene. He was over 18. And then the other barrier was that, we, he got arrested, but without arrest, he didn't get any treatment. So when Casey died, I knew about some legislation that had passed in Florida, it was called the Marchman Act, and I went to my representative, Representative Tom Kerr, and asked him if he would sponsor a bill that would allow parents, relatives, and/or friends to petition the court on behalf of someone who has a substance use disorder regardless of age and without criminal charges. We have tried to incarcerate ourselves out of this, and we can't. We've all figured that out now. And we know that our jails and prisons are not, have not been equipped to treat someone who has a substance use disorder. So Casey's Law for the state of Kentucky is designed for parents, relatives, and/or friends to petition the court on behalf of someone who has a substance use disorder regardless of age and without any criminal charges. You know, it's tragic that we have people, young people, who have felonies on their record who are now in recovery but are struggling to get jobs, to get housing because they still have that felony to live over. So you know, we've been parking the ambulance at the bottom of the cliff for a long time, waiting for the people to hit that proverbial bottom. We need to park the ambulance at the top of the cliff. At the back of the room, and I don't know, I'm probably out of time, right Becky? Probably way over my time, but on the back table, when you leave this evening, there'll be brochures about Transitions, about our Grateful Life Foundation, about Casey's Law. So I hope that you will pick, pick those up as you leave tonight. Thank you so much. What an honor to be here tonight. You know, I just, I can't thank the city of Erlanger enough for that, that tremendous, pivotal vote that night that, that put the building on Madison Pike on 17 down there that we call Transitions Grateful Life Center. We've got a lot of guys that are very grateful tonight because of that center. And I'm so grateful that I get to go to work there, that I get to be with those guys, that I get to see the miracle of when they come in, and when they leave, and how different they are when they walk in the door, and how they look and act, and when they leave. So thank you so very, very much for that. And thank you for letting me be with you tonight.
My name is Mac McArthur, I'm the Executive Director at Transitions. And I want to just pick up where Charlotte left off. This is our fifth year of operation down there on Pleasure Isle Drive, and we are so grateful for the opportunity to have done so. As was mentioned earlier, we tried several cities in northern Kentucky, going all the way to Carrollton even, and I think we were turned down seven times. Erlanger and Alexandria were the only ones who gave us the opportunity, and Erlanger gave us the biggest opportunity, especially Chief Fields, Chief Koenig, city administrator was Bill Shire, David Hahn helped us a lot, the city solicitor, and I'm forgetting people, so I'm sorry for that, but all, all the, Mayor Otto, all, all the folks. But I think Chief, Chief Fields probably turned, well, he was the chief back then. He turned the tables. When we had a meeting with the residents down on Pleasure Isle, and he went down and told them that he had talked to the beat officers who walked the streets around the program just like this one in Louisville, and they had assured him that it was a safe program and the neighborhood was better after it was opened than it was before it was opened. And he told them that he had done the legwork, and he reassured them that it would be okay. And that made a difference, it really made a difference. It didn't guarantee anything, but it really helped. So we really appreciated that. We appreciated every, everything that Erlanger had did then and has done since then. The cooperation during the past five years has just been tremendous. I don't think we've been a problem. If we have been, I have not heard about it. This is called the Friendship City, and I can understand why. Charlotte has her office right across the hall from where the new guys come in, and that's on purpose. That's so she can, she can greet them and get them started on the right path to whatever extent she can. My office is miles away, I don't see the new guys when they come in. But we've had probably close to 1,000 guys come through there, and by now probably, oh, 700 have graduated, and the majority of those, about two-thirds are still clean and sober a year later. The studies that the state has done, the state is doing an outcome study for all the recovery centers. So that's not, doesn't just affect the person, it affects their spouse, their parents, their kids, their coworkers. You know, every person with a substance use disorder affects four or five other people. So the city of Erlanger has helped us affect whatever, 2,000 or 3,000 people so far, and many more thousands in the future. So I want to thank you all very much.
Is that it Becky? Thank you all for that presentation. You're a valuable citizen of the city of Erlanger, and the work that you do is, is beyond, beyond question helpful to our entire community, so thank you very much. Our next presentation is a report from the Erlanger-Alzmer School District. Dr. Burkard is here, and Mr. Palmore.
That's why she, that's why she brought you.
That was very powerful, very difficult to follow, but thank you for what you're doing in Transitions. And I will echo that Erlanger is a wonderful partner to us, and we appreciate that. Every year we've been trying to come and share what we've been doing in our school district. Today, we're going to talk about and share information with you about some of the things that we're trying to do in the school district to help and work with the community. So for us, we appreciate the support we get from several community partners, especially the city of Erlanger, and we are trying to do our part to give back as well. And so we have really been working on establishing partnerships and doing things to enhance the work we're doing and enhance the, the community as a whole. So just to share something with you, yesterday morning, Mr. Rehman, the school principal, ran into my office and said, "You have got to come over to the front of the high school right now." Immediately, what do you think, I thought something very bad had happened. We graduated, our students graduated on Friday. I go over to Lloyd, and I see the sign up. A group of seniors had been there since 6 o'clock yesterday morning decorating the school to tell their teachers, "Thank you for all that they had done for them." And so for those in the world or in the local area who think we don't have good kids, we've got some pretty good kids. Not only that, they sat on the benches outside and greeted every single teacher who came in the building and thanked them for everything they had done. So I just wanted to share that with you because everything that you do for our students, everything that we do for our students, and everything our community partners do for our students, although they may not show their appreciation, it helps them a whole lot and they do appreciate it. lot, and they do appreciate it. And this goes right along with what we're trying to do. So we just want to share information about our community partnerships, things that we're doing to what we call insulate the pipeline, and then share some other things that are brand-new and exciting with you. Our mission, we've shared with you before, is to embrace and attend to the individual needs of our students regardless of the obstacles. And for some students, there are no obstacles. For some students, there are some. And for other students, there are many. So in order to live our mission and do what we need to do, in order to embrace and attend to our students and help them with those barriers, we have to first know what those barriers are. So we've spent a lot of time working in our district to talking with students, talking with the community, talking with parents, talking with staff members, to figure out what gets in the way of students when they're trying to learn. And we know that if they come to school and they're ready to learn and their life's going pretty well, we can do all the teaching, we can do all the academics. But nine times out of ten, when children have difficulty, or adolescents have difficulty in schools, it has nothing to do with the learning, but everything to do with what's going on in their lives. So for us, we started looking at our data. For some students, as I said, they may have none of these. They may be perfectly fine, they have all the supports they need. For other students, there may be some, for others, there may be some we don't know about. And we all know, as we just heard, that sometimes there could be things going on that we don't know about. So we really are trying to work with partners to ensure that when we do find out things, we're able to put some supports in place, and that we're really working hard to figure out what's going on. And we also don't always know the answer, but we're seeking partnerships to help us find those answers for our youth. So some people outside of the education world would say, "Well, why do you care about dental health? Why do you care about physical health? Why do you care about these things?" The point is, if we can get rid of those barriers, think of what we can do to change children's lives. How might their lives forever be changed? How might their learning be impacted? What could that do for them? So one thing that we've been working on, I'm just going to walk up here for a minute, is this community pipeline. So some of the work we're doing, if you look at this pipeline, this is what research says youth need to be successful, to get from here to here. You can see our part of the pipeline is right here. Now, we could just focus on this and nothing else, but we won't get to where we need to be with our youth. So what we've been doing is not only doing this, and we could fill up a library of all the things we do here, it's what we do. What we've been trying to do in our district is to look at what we call the insulation, and saying, "What are we doing in our district to insulate that pipeline for our youth? If these are the things that are getting in the way for some of our students, then how can we make that better?" And so before you, you have a handout. What we've done with that, is in the work we've done, we've gone through to say, "What partnerships do we have in place? And what kinds of things are needed to fill in the gaps?" So if you look, it's kind of color-coded. These are partnerships we've either sought out, or partnerships which have come to us. And you can see the gray is pretty big, the green is huge, and you can see those partners that we have listed. So what we're trying to do, if you want to go to the next slide, is look at our youth and ask ourselves, in order to change what's going on with children, in order to make an impact for them, this goes with the change theory of if we as leaders change the way we do business and work with other leaders, which we are so fortunate because Earlanger and Elsmere work with us, and we talk, and we share, and you all are so supportive. And we talk about, well, what kinds of things can we do together? We're trying to do that with lots of different groups. And we ask ourselves, who have we engaged, who have we not engaged? Where are our efforts focused? How well are we managing the community change process? Who supports our youth? Where are the supports located? How well are these supports being provided? Who are the youth in the community? Where do these young people and their families live, learn, and work? And how well are they doing? So those are questions we ask ourselves in order to insulate that pipeline, and that's how we got to this handout that you have. We've spent a lot of time doing that in addition to what we're doing to improve teaching and learning. But if we only do one piece, we're not doing our jobs. We know in our district, like many districts, we have a very diverse population, which is great. We have wonderful students, very dedicated, supportive staff members in a community. We have a very diverse population, about 2,200 students, 15% of students have a designated disability, 6% are English language learners, and 30% of our students are considered transient, which means they move around a lot. In our district, we have 19 different languages spoken by our students. It's on the left, and then on the right are the countries where our immigrant students are from. Many of our students who speak these languages were mostly born here, though, I will say that. So, you can go to the next slide. We are trying to use that diversity as an asset. So if we think about our youth who are in school now, and our youth are being born today, the world will be much more diverse than it is, or it was for us. And so in order to better prepare our youth for the future, it's very, very good that we have this diversity. Because in the world of the future, students or adults are not going to be around people who look just like them, and think just like them, and talk just like them. And in order to appreciate that diversity, and to maximize the potential of that diversity, we are really trying to use that to help engage our youth and help them learn about how they can be successful and help one another. But in our district, as we've embraced all this, we have had lots of academic success. Our high school is ranked in the top 10% of high schools and is labeled distinguished, and we're very, very proud of that. We also have 22 students who graduated from Bartlett, which is our alternative school we use as an intervention. I will say that, had we not had that, there would probably be 22 students that did not graduate. So there's students who need other options. Our middle school was a high-progress school, and it was in the top 10% of all middle schools in the state in terms of improvement. They received a lot of state-level and national-level recognition because of that, and are presenting across the nation. In addition to looking at how we're building that pipeline, we're also measuring things that students say. We're using a survey called the Gallup Poll. I could spend a whole day talking about it, but basically it measures hope, engagement, and well-being. We've used this data to look at our district and say, in kind of a framework of how we are organizing our initiatives, and we're saying, "What do we have in place to build hope? What do we have in place to engage students? And what do we have in place in terms of well-being?" And the reason for doing that is hope is a better predictor than even academic ability, or GPA, or ACT. So if students have hope, they're able to do so much more. If they just have the academic ability and don't have those other pieces, they often are at a disadvantage. In addition to using that data and looking at that pipeline, and looking at our academic data, and looking at the Gallup Poll surveys, we are able to use that information to receive several million-dollar grants in our district. So we have really worked to try to say, "What can we do beyond just what's going on in the classroom?" So we have three 21st Century Learning Grants, and I didn't bring this with me, but most of you probably received a newsletter. This, in the very back, there are two or three pages of everything going on in the summer in our school district. We want our schools to be open all year long, because we want our kids to have something to do. And so we're looking at our schools in terms of being community centers. And we're serving lunch and breakfast, and even dinner in lots of cases. We are also going out to certain areas of the community this summer, providing lunch and breakfast as well. But we have three 21st Century Learning Grants, which are highly competitive grants. We have one at Howe, one at Tishner, and one at Arnett. We have federal grants, the PEP Grant, which is a physical education grant. We wrote that with Beechwood, Ludlow, and Silver Grove. We'll have that grant for four years. It's a pretty competitive federal grant, and we're very excited to have it. We also have two counseling grants, which have provided three additional counselors in our school district. And then we have the Drug-Free Community Grant, which involves Kenton County Alliance. Kenton County Alliance is a community organization that was developed about seven years ago. Our district wrote the grant for that. It's not a school district grant, it's a community grant, which works with all the school districts in Kenton County, and it's about prevention. So we are the fiscal agent for that. In terms of well-being, when we looked at those barriers, believe it or not, a huge barrier for our students was dental health, which we'll talk about, but also there were some mental health needs. And so this list shows you, I won't read it to you. We, in 2012 and 13, we had outside mental health supports for students, which involved 2,196 visits from 109 unique students. We don't have our data from this year yet, but our partners are listed there below. North Key, the CDC, we have intern students from Northern. We have the Champions Program, which is a program through the Northern Kentucky Children's Home, which comes into our schools and works with youth, and also goes into the families and works with the family. They charge us nothing for that. Most of these partnerships, we receive no charge as a district. The Ridge helps with substance abuse, and that's another piece that we have going on as well. They will come to our district and do a free assessment onsite. And then we have been working with other districts in Northern Kentucky. We have an off-site area where they can go for treatment. It's a 12-week session. Our district does pay for that, but they only charge us about $60 to do that. So those are things that we need in Northern Kentucky. That is something, when we're talking about adults, it's also a need for youth. Saney has a program, but it's only for students or youth who have insurance. And so they have limited numbers of beds as well. Physical health, we have a partnership with HealthPoint, and they do not charge us. We have a school-based health center. We had 194 visits to that center, August through February of this school year. We had 4,000 visits, August to April, to our school nurses. Our dental clinic was huge. We had 621 visits from 427 unique students. Some of these students have insurance, most of them do not, but some do. And what we found is, you wouldn't think that would be a big deal, but we had some instances of students who didn't want to come to school, especially at the middle school level, or the high school level, because their teeth looked so bad. And they were in pain. We've had elementary students who've had to have all their teeth pulled. So when you think about, for a child who's in high school, who maybe never got to go to the dentist, that totally impacts their learning. And so it's about looking at, what are the pieces that we need to put in place? So that's a big thing that's really helped a lot of our students. So we've been trying to align those initiatives to build hope, engage youth, and address well-being, and those are some of the things that we're doing. In addition to that, you also have in front of you a flyer that's about college readiness. These are some things that are going on at Lloyd High School. This year, we're partnering with Advance Kentucky. We've done some dual-credit stuff in the past. It looks like this. We're partnering with another partner, again, free of charge to us, called Advance Kentucky. They've been doing this for eight years. And through Advance Kentucky, we're able to offer six AP courses. Students can take those at Lloyd. If they take the assessment and receive a three or higher, they not only get college credit, they receive $100 through the grant. It doesn't come from us. In addition to that, they still can take gateway classes at Northern, and we provide those onsite at Lloyd. And we also have Gateway and Community College classes that students go to, so we have students attending both of those. So if students are able to take advantage of all of those options, and they receive an A or a B in those dual-credit courses, they can graduate from Lloyd with 38 college credit hours for free. They do have to pay some for their books, but if they can't cover that, we often do. Which means they will start college as a sophomore. So that goes back to building hope, because we've had second graders who've looked at me, or have looked at their teacher, and have said, "I'm not going to college." And the reason for that, it often has to do with economics. So what we're trying to do is share this information with our elementary families and our community, which is why I'm sharing this with you. Because we want to work together to share all the possibilities for our youth, and how we're supporting one another. So as we work to develop how we're organizing our initiatives, and how we're supporting that pipeline, we want you to know that we're trying to do our part. And we appreciate the support that you're giving to us, and we're trying to give as much back as we possibly can, much more than we try to ask for. So we're really trying to ensure that our students are prepared for the future, and when they're not, we're looking at things that are getting in the way of their learning. Two exciting things. As you know, when we talked with you last year, we talked about kindergarten readiness, and when we looked at our data, kindergarten readiness jumps up and waves its hand in our face and said, "Big issue here." Because as Mr. Powellmore shared, we had about, not this year, what was the percentage this year, Mr. Powellmore? Ready. 30% of kindergartners entering kindergarten were ready for kindergarten. So that's a much more difficult issue, because those kids aren't with us. So we've been really working with our community partners. We have a couple exciting things going on. One thing is in our district newsletter, it's called "Me and My School." United Way is funding kindergarten classes this summer at Lindeman and at Howe for incoming kindergartners. So they will be able to come in the summer, go to school, all for free, and have a whole school day in order to prepare them for kindergarten. In addition to that, Head Start is doing something, and I'm going to leave these brochures here for you, called, they're now offering Head Start preschool in your home. So they will come to the home. There's an application on the back. And so if you have people who come in here, in the administration building with little kids, like we do in our district, we say, "Where are you going to preschool? What kind of programs are you in?" We started looking at our data in kindergarten readiness. We can now track the number of kids we have in our preschool, the number of kids in Head Start, and the number of children who are in surrounding preschool programs. And what we found is only about half of our kindergarten students are in those programs. So we started wondering, well, what can we do to find out what's going on with the rest of the children? And we have one thing going on at Arnett. We have a toddler school. I don't know if you knew about that, but it's for children ages 12 months to 36 months. And it's on Fridays. We offer that to the community. We just need to get the word out. It was our first year this year. Parents can come and bring their children. We can work with them to do different activities, to show them things that they can do at home. In addition to that, we started a new partnership with Children, Inc. And we think this is going, we're 99% sure this is going to happen, and you all can help us share this news. Children, Inc. is going to come and put a childcare center at the end of Lloyd's old hallway. And so they're going to remodel three of those classrooms. We'll be able to have two classrooms there for ages three to five-year-olds. And they're totally going to fund that, in terms of the classrooms. In addition to that, families will be able to take their children there, either partial day or full day, at a sliding scale based on their income. So that means, and some students could get scholarships to go for free. So that means in addition to a child being able to go to a quality childcare center at a fee that a parent can afford, that can help parents who are maybe in need of getting a job, or going back to school. Because in my opinion, a lot of children don't go to any preschool or childcare facility because it's very expensive, and people can't always afford that. And so this will help with that as well. They have to follow all the guidelines, or most of the guidelines that we follow as a school district. So we totally run and operate it by them. In addition to that, they're giving us an outreach person who will go out into the community and find those children who aren't in kindergarten, who aren't in preschool, and help those families to work with them, or get them enrolled somewhere. And so, and they're going to work closely with our preschool and Head Start and all the other childcare centers in the area. So we're really excited about that. We also, as you know, our district fully funds all-day kindergarten. In a lot of districts, you can receive all-day kindergarten, but mostly the parents will have to pay for that. So we do that. The board covers that cost. Now, we could also offer all-day preschool for those children who are attending our preschool as well, because Children, Inc. has agreed to bus them from our Arnett Center over to the Lloyd Center for the rest of the day, so they could go all day. That facility will be open Monday through Friday until six o'clock, and in the summers, if all goes as planned. So in addition to looking at what are the needs of our children and our youth, we're also looking at what are the needs of our families, and what can we do to help support anything that might be missing for them? So we're really excited about that. I know we've been in talks with Mr. Fields as well, about doing some things with early childhood, and it's very exciting, and we appreciate the support. But we- But we, and I appreciate the time to be able to share how we're trying to give back as well, and we thank you for everything you've provided to our youth and for the time you always provide to us when we ask. So thank you very, very much. We know that this is not the end, it's only the beginning. And so what we're trying to do, especially for all of our children early on, is give them a vision of what their lives can be, of what success looks like. Because if they can't picture it, how can they do it? So we're really working with our youth to ensure that they have a plan for the future, and that, early on, they believe that they are able to accomplish great things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. While Kathy is taking her seat, to place that in context, this council had identified several years ago, the, one of the issues and one of the concerns the city had in attracting the type of residents, businesses, home building that we had 20 and 30 years ago, was the issues facing and the image of the Erlanger-Elsmere school system. Those, a few of us who have been supporters of the school district all of our lives knew that the image was a false image. But now you can see it in data. The Lloyd High School is a, is a distinguished high school. And I bet you, of those kids whose hats were in the air Friday night, a hunk of them are going to college. High percentage of them. So we're there. We just have to keep getting the word out. And we decided, as a city, to partner with the Erlanger-Elsmere Board of Education and as many things as we could, and we have. And there are results. Thank you, Kathy.
We appreciate that.
It's, it's great. Yeah, that seems to be the theme tonight. That's okay. We'll see.
I don't need to discuss that here.
Thank you. We'll see how long Officer Selby and Ailer take. TJ, Jill, it's all yours. No pizza tonight.
No pizza.
No pizza, Frank.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you all about the new and exciting things we have going on with the Explore program. I want to first say that we'd recently participated in the Explorer competition, was held two weeks ago. It was a two-day event that's held every year, and it goes over a lot of different things that police officers do, such as traffic accidents, suspect approach, and various other things as well. We took first place in driving. This is the first year that the Explorer, Dan Beer Council had, had an event in driving. And Ben Kramer achieved the first-place win on that, so we're very proud of him. But the individuals I have standing up here today are Ben Kramer, Raven Kane, and this is Caden Schaefer, who's also Explorer. We had the opportunity with the departure of Explorer Lieutenant Emily Barti, who advanced further in her education as well. So we had the opportunity to promote two new sergeants. And Ben Kramer and Raven Kane have accepted the position of sergeant. We're very proud of these two people. They, they continue with their dedication to show us what it is, what a true leader is, a young leader advancing their careers and educating, through education, and they're the example we want to set for the rest of our Explorers. So we're very proud of them. There's a third sergeant that was promoted recently. He could not be here tonight, but Ben Kramer has applied for, to study abroad in China. So we're hoping he gets the opportunity to do that. With his departure, Bryce Hamilton, who cannot be here tonight, will accept the new position of sergeant. So I also would be remiss not to ask the help of all of you who have family or friends or coworkers that might have school-aged children, somewhere in the age between 14 and 21, that are looking to maybe get into law enforcement, or if not, would like to go into, you know, other things, but would like to have the camaraderie that we, the Explorer, the Explorer program here in Erlanger, we would like to ask your help that they, that they come aboard. We lose usually one to two Explorers every year. They either age out, or they go on and do other things through education or work, and we're always looking for new Explorers. So I really appreciate your help in that. That's all we have for you tonight, and I thank you for your opportunity, or thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. We have two service award recognitions tonight. The first will be presented by Mr. Hahn, right?
Hello, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Twenty years ago was brought that we needed to have a new Board of Adjustment member. For those of you who don't know what the Board of Adjustment does, basically, the city passes a zoning ordinance, and the quick version is, of it is, is that the, the board can vary from that zoning regulations and allow people to do within limits things that the zoning ordinance basically says that you can't. So this person needs some background in, in building industries and properties and such. So the name was brought to me, and I took it to the mayor at the time, that Rui Newsom, due to his, him being, in our opinion, the perfect fit for the, for the job. He was a home remodeler of sorts. He's a realtor. He's a retired industrial arts teacher. At that time, he wasn't retired when he was first brought here. Heck, even, even drives the bus. So he, he kind of did it all. He drove the bus for us when we went up to see developments from a developer up to the Columbus area. So he's just a, he was just a perfect fit.
He took the football team to points east like Lawrence County on Juggernaut One over there. Those are long bus rides, folks.
It was soon after he was put on the board that his peers, the other members of the Board of Adjustment, saw his leadership and appointed him chairman of that board, which he still holds. So Rui is committed to the city of Erlanger and its betterment. Ironically, from your first presentation by the transition folks, Rui was the chairman of the board and was the deciding vote on approving transitions going in at that particular location. So that very successful organization. So I just wanted to say thank you to Rui for your, for your time and your service to the city of Erlanger. Thank you.
Come on, Rui.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'll try to be brief, but I will say this much. In the 20 years, the pleasure's been mine. We've had a lot of interesting meetings. And I was, this week, it's gone back, and the transition meeting kept going through my mind, and that was probably the largest meeting that was ever held in the history of Erlanger. It was like 400 to 500 people here. It lasted four hours and 45 minutes. We had every news media that you could even think of. And there were several factors involved that night. The strongest opposition, not mentioning names, was somebody that my wife had worked for for five years. And I told, you know, that I wanted to vote last, chairman wanted to vote last because of the rules of order. And ironically, it came up a two-to-two vote, and I was going to be the deciding vote. And I thought about it, and I'd already thought a lot about it. And my comment, that's probably still on tape, was that we have to start somewhere. And I voted for it. And, you know, that was just one among many. We get called in the Board of Adjustment for a lot of things. A lot of them are after fact. In other words, after somebody's put a swimming pool too close to somebody else, or some issue, house wasn't built according to code. Our interest is always what's best for the city, what's best for the people of the community, and what, you know, where we can go from there. And I think we've demonstrated that atmosphere all the way through, and I've enjoyed it, and I still enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you. Chief Whitaker.
Good evening. I was, you know, thinking about these service awards and time, and it makes me think where I was 20 years ago, and then I thought about Dave and where I was 15 years ago in my career. And I just never pictured myself at this spot at this time doing this. So it's, it's, it's interesting to think back where we've taken our careers. I first met Dave when I was working one of my three or four part-time jobs, happened to be at Park Hills Fire Department. And that's when I first met Dave. First thing that got me about Dave was, this guy's a fireman. He is way too smart to be a fireman. Dave just has an air, very intelligent young man. And I think Erlanger, for 15 years, has been very blessed to have him on this department. He will admittedly tell you about his growth, not only personally, but professionally. And it makes me very proud to say that currently, this is the right-hand man of this department. And I'm very proud to do so. He's done extremely well in my seven months here, and I know we've got many more great years and good things to look forward to. So I want to congratulate Dave on his 15 years with the city. Well, I've definitely got the wool pulled over your eyes somehow there, chief. I'd say definitely with all the changes going on with the city, updates, everything is so exciting here. I just love the opportunity to be here. Definitely couldn't imagine myself anywhere else or doing anything else. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Given the length of the meeting and the fact that we have 12 pieces of legislation, I will forego the mayor's report tonight, and we'll go into the reports of standing committees, public safety, Ms. Pitts.
We have no report. Everybody should have received their email from the last month's report, if you have any questions. Chief Wilson's in the house.
Hello. How are you tonight? Chief Wilson, do you have anything to add?
I have no report.
Very good. Any questions of the police committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public safety, fire, and EMS. Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunoff.
I've just got a couple things, and I'll be really brief also. As of the end of April, the annual inspections were up to 30%, so we're right on track to get all of those inspections done by the end of the year. The summer burn ban is in effect from May 1st through September the 30th. And Chief Whitaker's in the house.
Chief Whitaker, if you have anything to add.
I have some thank yous, but I'm going to defer the, move away from the meeting.
Okay, very good. Any questions of the committee or Chief Whitaker? Is that all, John? Do you have anything?
I have nothing, sir.
We'll move on to the public works, Mr. Cahill and Mr. Brown.
You should have received your report from Mr. Bogart. The only sad thing I have to say is, May 31st, the pothole line has been officially closed, and they are in repair now, instead of the pothole patching.
The only thing I have to note is that Mr. Bogart managed to sneak the word "snow" into his report, so be sure to be on the lookout for that when you review it, and he's in the gallery. Rick, do you have anything to add this evening?
No, I have nothing.
Any questions of the committee or Mr. Bogart? Seeing none, we'll move on to the administration committee. Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
We have no official report. Just wanted to give everyone an update on the hours of operation in the administration building. Eight to five Monday through Friday, and we stop passports at 4:30. That's all we have.
Mr. Burke, do you have anything?
No, sir. Thank you.
Any questions of the administration committee? Let's go on to finance, Mr. Howard, Mr. Blankenship.
I want to report that we had the finance committee meeting on the 20th. Mr. Engelman presented his report on the impact of Toyo's announcement about their relocation. Also, we have the second reading of the fiscal year 2014 amended budget tonight, and the fiscal year 2015 proposed budget on the agenda night, both for second reading. And the finance department staff is working on preparing the city books for its audit.
Greg Engelman's in the house. Greg, do you have anything to add? Any questions of the finance committee? Move on to the Friendship City Networking, Ms. Hopkins, this is you.
I'll be very brief. Everything I'm about to share with you is posted on several sites, is available for you in paper form at the front of the room. We have a very active summer parks starting. Prior to the summer parks starting this Saturday, we're hosting our first open forum, non-agenda discussion with community members. Our first chat and chew is going to be held at Station 3, 4100 Narrows Road, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. We invite all of our residents. There'll be representatives there from the city in terms of employees and elected officials. And what we'd like to do is engage in conversation with you, learn about any questions that you might have about us, about how we function. If you've got concerns, if you've got a vision for the city, we'd sure like to hear all that from you. So the first event, chat and chew, is, like I said, Saturday, June 7th. We're hosting a follow-up version of it at the Depot Park on Wednesday evening, June 25th. This is all on our website under chat and chew. On June 12th, we begin our parks program with a night of fun at the Erlanger Putt-Putt from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. If it rains that night, there's another event going on at our library, where our Historical Society is going to be there to discuss the historic events that shaped both Erlanger and Elsmere. So you have a choice of events for that evening. Followed by the next Thursday, June 19th, our flagship event of the summer is our Touch a Truck event. It'll be right across the street at the Lloyd High School parking lot. There's a lot of new additions this year. We're having food served for free for those who are 1 to 18 years of age, as provided by a grant that Kathy had told you about. For nominal fee, everybody can else, else can eat too. We've got apparatus from all of our city departments and other little surprises that'll be on board for that evening. Then the next week, we have the petting zoo at our Rainbow Park, which will feature 15 animals for an hour. So come on out and enjoy that. And then I'll tell you of July's events at our next council meeting. The entire series of events are posted out on our website, but please feel free to pick up one of these on your way out this evening. Oh, logo. Okay, we hosted a very spirited committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, in which council was presenting, presented with a, a number of different versions of our idea of what we should make our new logo. And so there were some conglomeration put together of all of the ideas that council shared with us, and this is what we've come up with to date. We are incorporating this on our letterhead and the corners of our envelopes, so when you see a mailer coming from us, this will be the new look. It's a little bit different than what you see on the wall up there, a little bit fresher and more colorful. So if you have any further input, please let Rick Bogart, as it was his very competent staff that created this for us, or Mark Fields or I, and we'll be glad to take into consideration your thoughts.
There certainly were a lot of, was a lot of input from council when that night.
Yes, it was very lively.
Everybody had an opinion, but as usual, with this group, a consensus developed, and there it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next report is the Cleanup Erlanger Committee. Mr. Cahill and Ms. Pitts, do you have a report this evening?
Mr. Cahill, actually, we have recommendation on vicious animal committee ordinance, and that is to stay the same. And also, we are recommending to take back the rental property ordinance and take a look at that from a tenant registry and notary, and make some changes to that.
All right. Anything from you?
That's it.
That the end of the report?
The end of the report.
Any questions? Next is the Friendship Garden Co., Patty's not here. She told me on the phone that they're just about finished putting together before she left on her Cancun vacation. They're just about finished accumulating all the names to be added to the memorials across the street. They're having some decisions to make, but they think they just about have it done. And I'm sure they'll be ready to go by July, because she was right at the end of that thing. Okay? You've heard the reports of both standing and special committees. I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion, Mr. Blankenship, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, reports of representatives. First, I want to go to Mr. Howard, who I know has a report on the municipal government league, and you all discussed the legislation.
Right, right. And I just want to let the council know that they did pass out a copy of all the bills that were passed to the Kentucky Legislature this year, so if anybody wants a copy of those bills, I got available. My hat's off to Adam for all the work that he's done for us legislatively this, this year. They have announced that he's a friendship, friend of the city, he's by J.D. Cheney, and so, Adam, thank you for everything he's done. That's about the, it was very interesting to me, enjoyed it, so learned a lot. So, so like I said, if anybody wants any copies of the legislations, laws that were passed. I said, if anybody wants any copies of the legislations, laws that were passed, let me know.
See bill.
See bill.
Any other reports from any of the groups? Yes, Renee.
Kenton County Alliance.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're also in with the transitions and all that kind of thing. Project sticker shop, that's around prom time and summertime when they get the kids to go around and put stickers on the packaged liquor that tells people that if they buy for underage children, they're going to get in trouble. And Lisa Anglin and Paul Flager from Kenton County Alliance have been doing, they've been doing follow-up work to make sure that everything's in order for the Coalition Academy. Their Week 1 and Week 2 is why the Kenton County Alliance has changed their meeting from the 1st Friday of the month. It's going to be actually June the 13th in the old Enzer Building. And two people from Washington, D.C., that's Edna Garcia Lopez and Costella Green, are coming from Washington, D.C. to visit with Kenton County Alliance the last part of June. And they are interested in meeting members of Kenton County Alliance to learn about the Coalition, what we are doing, and that we are meeting the drug-free community guidelines. So that's why Lisa and Paul are trying to get everything, all their ducks in a row, to make sure that we are in compliance with the grant that we've received.
Very good. Tom, you have an OKI report?
Yeah, recommendations for the Kenton County Transportation Plan have been submitted and approved, and we'll be waiting for the final, final copy to come out. And we'll share that with council and the rest of the city as soon as that comes out.
Very good. Any other reports? We hosted the Kenton County Mayor's Group in the, in May. As it was before the primary, I think the Saturday before the primary, it was lightly attended by certain groups because they were all out walking the streets, trying to get their candidates elected. As a consequence, we got through our agenda in about an hour, an hour and a half with anybody yelling at each other. And, you know, I don't even think anybody from fiscal court was there. We certainly made it go very smooth. But again, it was our turn to host the event. That's an important group, because we get together and share ideas and problems. This happened to be an election meeting, so we didn't have to do much, which was great, because we all had places to go. Those are all the reports of our representatives this evening. Now we'll move into the reports of city operations. Mr. Vioxx, our city engineer, do you have any report this evening?
All I have, sir, is we've got about seven projects going on, and they're active right now with five different contractors, and they're all moving along very well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Vioxx? Our city attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to the legislation, which is undoubtedly a record number this, for sure. But I do need to discuss with you the cable television franchise. That's a 15-year franchise. It's expired. It needs to be renewed. We have distributed to all of you a proposed ordinance and the proposed franchise itself. If you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer them. The cable TV people would like to make a presentation to you. I don't know if you want to do that at a committee meeting or at the next council meeting.
I think that would be appropriate at a committee meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be in town the third Tuesday.
We'll put it off till you can be here, unless there's a time period we have to get this done.
No, there is not.
It can wait till July.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Wickman? Our CAO, Mr. Fields.
Following up on what Mr. Cahill said also about the Kenton County Transportation Plan, the state's already come out with theirs also. I received it this week. I will forward that to everybody so they can look at it. It's a couple hundred pages long. So I'll send it to you in an email. We'll print it out, and you all can look at that. If you've got any comments, get them back to me, and we can send them down, or you can send them, however you want to do it. The only thing I have, the thing I've got is, I would like to ask for a committee meeting on the 17th, just to discuss Commonwealth Station and the Form-based codes again. And I would like to have that for the whole meeting on June 17th.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it all? Any questions? You all have heard the reports of city operations. I'll entertain a motion to be opted up as presented. Motion, Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunoff. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any correspondents this evening?
No, sir.
Does any member of council have any correspondents this evening? Now is the time that we reserve on our agenda for comments from the public, from citizens. We have five who have signed up to say. The first is, if I'm going to read it right, Kim Marconi? Yes, please take the, go up to the podium, and it's all yours. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Marconi.
Yes.
Macaranda, it doesn't matter.
I couldn't tell if there was an S in there or not.
No, it's an I.
But I can't see anything.
That's it. That's okay. That's okay. So this is my first time at a city meeting, and I wasn't really sure how things went down. And so I'm glad I came. I have some positive things about being a resident of Erlanger, and I have some negative things. And right now, the negative things are outweighing my positive things. Okay? The neighborhood where I live, I live on Hallam. And right now, I am seeing things that I would expect in the slums. I am seeing things that I would expect living in the country. It's very aggravating when my husband and I work hard all week long. You know, we're good people, and we pay our taxes. We go to work every day. We, you know, don't cause any problems. But then, when I come home at the end of the day, it's aggravating to see what's going on around me. I have a family across the street from me, and talking about kids in school. There's three kids in that house, along with the other kids, call it the Erlanger Zoo. They have, I was told, I haven't seen, they have chickens, they have rabbits, they've got cats, and they're on their third dog. They had one pit bull that animal control came and took away about a month or so ago. Two weeks ago, animal control came, took another one away. And then as of just this past Saturday, they now have another one. My concern is, how do they keep getting an animal? If they keep getting taken away, how do they keep getting them?
What's the address of this place? Do you know?
412.
412, thank you, ma'am.
I mean, you know, felons aren't allowed to have guns. They can't get those. I mean, my thoughts are, where is there a list that if these people are abusing animals and animal control is coming and taking them away, why isn't their name on a list somewhere? Just a thought. Just thought I'd throw it out there. You know, it kind of makes me feel like, that's the part of feeling like I'm living in the country, not the city. As of today, the one little boy that lives two doors up from me said, one of the rabbits died today. Now, that doesn't surprise me either, because witnessing what I see with the children, which I don't think is good, my thoughts are, if you're not taking care of your children, then how are the animals being cared for? You know what I mean? I know they're left home alone a lot. That's a given. There's a lot of other things I could go into, but I'm not going to. I just, I'm going to draw the line there. Then I got my neighbors next door. So a young couple, they just moved in about a year ago. The house next door to us sat empty for over three years.
Was it a foreclosure house?
Yes, it was. And I used to make phone calls to the city. I even came up to the city building to speak to somebody about getting the grass cut, because, you know, we cut our grass. We keep our yard clean. You know, we like to have a nice home. That's what we've worked for. So I was all excited, my husband and I, when this young couple moved in. We thought, wow, okay, now we don't have to go to the city anymore and ask them to cut the grass, and then them fight with the bank to get their money back. We thought, here's a young couple. Okay, this is great. We even bought them a welcome-to-the-neighborhood gift, you know, wanting to be the good neighbors and just be like, hey, glad somebody's in here. Honestly, I wish it was empty. I just feel like I'm living, I'm surrounded by hillbillies, and I don't know where to go. I mean, I feel like their rights outweigh my rights. My husband has had foot surgery, and he's not able to cut the grass. I am 50 years old. I have cut my grass 13 times this year. The neighbor next to me, twice. The people across the street, twice. As the one hillbilly was in his driveway, mind you, at 11:30 last night, with headlights, working on his riding lawnmower. And I'm really not sure why he has a riding lawnmower, because if you go around the back of the house, the grass is three foot tall. The house next door to me, they've got skids out there, they've got litters of kittens out there. And I said something to Aaron, maybe shouldn't have said his name, but that's his name. I said, you know, I said, you've really got to stay on top of cutting your grass. You can't let it get too tall, you know? It's going to interfere, it's going to mess up your lawnmower. It just makes it harder. You know, I always thought, you know, let's work smart, not hard. Okay? He's like, yeah, you know, I know, but I'm just a free-care person, you know, it really doesn't matter. So, you know, anytime you think my grass has gotten too high, just come knock on the door and let me know. I thought, you know what, my son is 31 years old. I am not raising another kid. I'm not doing it. Why should I have to? These are people that are over 18 years old. So I come here tonight because I am frustrated. I want to know, what are my rights? What are their rights? I mean, back to the people across the street, the Erlanger Zoo, this is the same family that one night, the mom and a friend, I don't know what they were on, but decided to bury a kitten alive. Now, oh, yeah, I see how you're looking at me. This is the truth, because if you go to the neighbor next door to them, he went over, he got that cat. He rescued that cat. And now that cat is 20 pounds heavier and alive. So, you know, I've talked with a few of my neighbors, and some of them are skeptical about talking. Some of them have voiced their opinions a lot. I know some of them have called the police a lot. And, you know, we're just kind of like, what do we do? I mean, you can't make grown people do things. But then, why do I have to live like that? You know, our house is going to be paid for next year, and I'm already thinking about moving out of Erlanger. But I got a problem. How am I going to sell my house? Who wants to live in my house right now with a hillbilly here, a zoo across the street? Who wants that? Would you buy my house? Would any of you buy that house? I didn't think so. So I come to you all tonight. What do I do? What can be done? Can anything be done? Because those three kids over there, they need to be saved. I'll tell you that right now. Somebody needs to step in, and I don't know who it is. But, you know, the other neighbors, like I said, everybody's a little leery, because anytime we might have to park our car in front of their house, if it's for five minutes, by golly, there's a note on there. Don't park your car in front of our house. Isn't it a public street? So, you know, there's some neighbors that are kind of in fear. They don't want to say anything, because they're not sure how, you know, they're going to react. I don't know. The young couple, they're just, I don't know what's their problem. I was going to go and talk to him, but I knocked on his door, and he wouldn't answer. I don't know. So what do I do? Somebody, somebody guide me. Somebody help me. Somebody give me suggestions, because that's what I'm here for.
Do you, have you reported the property issues, the high grass and the skids and the animals, chickens? Has that been reported to our codes enforcement? I mean, we're writing it down now. But has that been reported to our codes enforcement department?
You know, I honestly don't know.
Well, it is now.
Okay.
We're going to look into that. Second thing was with regard to the children, have you contacted, what's the cabinet called, my friend? Every governor changes it. The Cabinet for Families and Children? We have state social workers here, all, what's it called?
You can contact the police department.
I'm sorry? Cabinet for Family Services. You can call them and report to them anytime.
You can contact the police department, and they have the proper paperwork to fill out those kind of things, to guide you in that direction.
You know, about a year ago, I did contact somebody about the children. I don't know if anything was ever done. I mean, it's sad. It's very, very sad, because these three kids don't stand a chance. They don't stand a chance. And it breaks my heart. I mean, you know, like I said, I try to live a good life every day. I try to do the right thing every day. But when I see something wrong, and it's wrong, I have a hard time keeping my mouth shut. And I just don't, I don't know. And in the same breath, too, I wouldn't want to be the reason a child being tore away from a parent or someone that, that's all they know. I mean, that's a real, real thin line to cross over there. You know what I mean? But these kids are, they're just not going to ever have a chance if they don't get some help themselves. The adults are the guilty ones. They're the guilty ones. And they're in cahoots with a house up the street on the corner of Hallam and Mary. And I'm sure if anybody comes around Hallam there, you can't miss it. I mean, I've never seen so much trash outside of a house in my life. And how do they get away with it? Chairs, microwaves, washers, dryers. As you speak, you can drive around there right now. There's all kinds of bags of beer cans and Coke cans and, I don't know, I don't get it. I just don't get it. Now, if that be me, oh, my God. I don't, I would have been reported a long time ago. Somebody be showing up at my house every day. But I just feel like, you know, the hillbillies win every single time. And I'm using the word hillbillies because I really don't know what other word to use. And I'm trying to be polite, because maybe they're just that ignorant. I don't know. I really don't. But I watch these adults go back and forth to the houses. And then I'll let you all think about what all's going on there.
Ma'am, if you would, Assistant Chief Wilson's here. He'll talk to you, give you the, give his contact information.
Am I speaking too much?
No, absolutely.
If you want help, this is the way we can help you. This is the only way.
How can we get help?
Right. How can we get help? Talk to Assistant Chief Wilson. He'll give you my contact information also. And we can put all this stuff in one report to everybody that we need to do that with, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it's important that you bring these concerns to our attention, because a lot of us don't see it or know it. So thank you very much.
Hey, well, there's kids involved. Come up here every time.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
I will. It's just, you know, thought about it, prayed about it, didn't know what to do. And I finally called, and I heard city meetings for the first Tuesday of every month. And I got off work, changed clothes, excuse the way I looked, and ran up here.
Thank you, Kim.
Kim, great work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Ed Norglow.
My name is Ed Norglow. I've lived in the city for a little over 50 years, and I enjoyed it very much. I've seen good times. I've seen times where not so good, as far as how the city is kept. The lady just before me talking about clutter and whatever. And I can drive up Stevenson Road and see it, one side of the street, the other side of the street, and never seems to get straightened out. I don't know what's going on. But anyway, that's not my topic for tonight. Like I said, I've lived in the city for 50 years. I've known Mayor Rouse for a number of years. We go back and forth, agreeing and disagreeing on things such as N-K-A-P-C.
It's always a great communication, though, back and forth.
And 911 and all that. But my topic for tonight, and I'll keep it very short, is the budget for 2000, I guess it'd be 2014, 2015. And I'd just like to say that if there's any tax increase in there, I'm totally against it. I don't think we need a tax increase. I've talked with people from other cities, mayors, and they brag about how they've kept costs down, even reduced costs, paid off debt, and doing great. And I'd just like to see that for our city, where there's no tax increase. So much for that. My other point is Toyota. What happened out there, what's going to happen. And I just thought it would be a good idea, maybe it's already implemented, I don't know. But I think somebody in the city has to talk with these large corporations to see what's on their mind, if there's anything the city can do for them, or even... on their mind, if there's anything the city can do for them, or even what they can do for us, as far as providing some ideas, how to better run the city. So, I think I'll just leave it go at that, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed. Thank you, sir. The next is Tyson Hermes.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. In a recent article in the community reporter, the mayor was quoted as saying the city hasn't had a tax increase in over four years. But the fact is that four years ago, property tax rate was three dollars and fifteen cents per thousand dollars of value, and the tax rate now is three fifty-seven. That's a thirteen percent increase. People pay attention to the tax rate before buying a home. Businesses pay attention to the tax rate before calling the city their home. Every time we raise the taxes, fewer people are motivated to be here. A great example is Toyota's recent decision to move to Plano, Texas. Look at the tax rates in Plano. They're thirty-six percent less than here in Erlanger. The last time our taxes were there was in two thousand and five. The mayor was also quoted as saying, in the same article that I mentioned earlier, that the, they had developed the budget, it's getting ready to be passed tonight, before the news of Toyota's departure. That is, with the compensating rate increase, and the additional maximum allowable by the House Bill forty-four, tax increase of four percent. This budget shows ten percent more in expenses over last year, with no fancy projects or anything out of the ordinary, again, as quoted in the article. I think this is similar to a household keeping their budget after an income earner has lost their job. Please find a way to reduce the expenditures, instead of putting the burden on the taxpayer. Thank you.
What I told the reporter was that Erlanger had received no more money in the past four years than it had from the year before. I did not say to her, tax increase, we had not had tax increase. In the past four years, the city of Erlanger, the facts are, we budgeted to take the compensating rate, which just allows you to get exactly the same money you lived on last year, plus four percent, and in each of the four years, we didn't take any of the percentage, we just took the compensating rate, which again is the amount of money that the city had the year before. We're spending no more out of that thing. The problem with the budgeting is, we don't know what the property values in the city of Erlanger are until August, to set our tax rate. We are required by law to pass a budget now, by July first. So, we have to make a budget as a planning tool. I'm sure you do the same thing for your business. We have, we make assumptions at this point in order to pass a budget, and then when we get our tax rates in August, then we pass what the actual tax is gonna be. And again, in the past four years, it's been just the same amount of money for the city of Erlanger. Every point that you've made, Tyson, is well-made, understood. We all, everybody up here feels the same way, and we're constantly looking at ways to tighten the, for instance, I can tell you right now, we have positions that were filled this time last year, where people have retired or left the city that we have not filled. We have some projects that are finished now, such as the alignment of McAlpin and Garvey Avenue. We have the purchase of property over here, that was a, was a concrete plant over here on, it's called Houston Road Extended, it's had various names over the years, Hartman Road. Those, and when I made the comment to her, I said, we don't have any new projects underway like that. Those things have been completed, we're done with them. But I appreciate your comment, I just wanted to make sure you understood what I told the reporter. It's not necessarily how it came out, but that's what I told.
Well, I appreciate you bringing up the compensating rate. I want to make sure it's clear to everybody, there's only one reason why we ever take an increase in the compensating rate, and that's because the property values as a whole of the city have gone down.
And the primary reason for that is foreclosures.
But they have gone down for the last three years.
As they have all over northern Kentucky.
Mm-hmm. I know that there's probably not a whole lot of people that are gonna cry too loud about small tax increases like this, but it is a tax increase. And if we're gonna attract businesses and people to the city, we've got to start by lowering the taxes, help jumpstart this economic engine.
Thank you, sir. Next on here is Gary Meyer.
I have an initial.
I'm sorry, Gary.
I have an initial.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Georgette, you were on here also. Is Georgette, would you like to speak? This is Georgette Norglow.
Yes, Georgette Norglow, Mary Deed Norglow, who spoke earlier. So, my comments will just be brief. I just came to, because I'm concerned about the tax increases. We have a daughter and her husband who are looking for new housing, and they now have found a home that's in Taylor Mill, and they also have a comparable home they're looking at in Erlanger. Well, now, they're starting to lean towards the Taylor Mill, because again, the property taxes are higher here, the car taxes are higher. So, be that as made.
Car taxes are higher in Erlanger?
Their car tax.
Erlanger doesn't have a car tax.
The tangible. They, their car, well, the only reason I know is, the comment was made about the insurance policy that they had on their cars, that they lived in Crestview Hills, and then they got a letter from, or they got a bill from the insurance company and said, you owe this, and he's like, wait a minute, I just paid this a couple weeks ago. Called, oh, you shouldn't have gotten that, that was a mistake. Well, you are living in the city of Erlanger right now, because they're staying with us until they find a home, and they said, well, yeah, the taxes are, would be higher, that's why your bill was higher than what you paid earlier, but it's miniscule, it's fourteen dollars twice a year, so twenty-eight dollars, and you have two cars. You know, so it's just, it's just one little piece that's going on there. But anyway, but one thing I would like to say from being at this meeting, there are a number of things that I'd never heard about. Chat and, Chat and.
Chat and Chew.
Chat and Chew, I never heard of this.
Just started.
But, just some various things that I hadn't heard about. And I had been on the Erlanger webpage, and I didn't find that very user-friendly for getting information about the city. I checked out Crestview Hills, and I think they have an exemplary webpage. They have a place where, contact us, email us, what to do if, or, you know, so it really gave, like, the lady who spoke earlier about her neighborhood problem, a way to go, just by going on the internet. So, I would hope that this could be part of the friendliness for Erlanger, to focus on a friendly webpage site. And that's about all I would say for now, and hope you all have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, those are all the folks that have signed up. Next, we have bids. Mr. Vioxx.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Got a fellow back here in the.
Yeah, here, little ladies. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'll be able to speak really quickly.
Sure, go up to the podium. If we had fifty people here, I'd have to say no, but one, absolutely. Have your name, please.
My name is Dan McElhaney, and I've lived in Erlanger since two thousand six, in the Woodland Hills subdivision. This is my first time at city council. So anyways, I just wanted to say a couple things here. Since two thousand eleven, my property taxes have gone from six hundred and ninety-five dollars, two thousand twelve, seven thirty-seven, this is on my house, to two thousand thirteen, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. My math is, I wasn't a math major, but that's definitely well over ten percent, twelve percent, somewhere around there. Also, on my insurance policies for my home, the city tax that I pay on my insurance policy for my house, a hundred and eleven dollars. The amount that I pay for my vehicles to the city of Erlanger on my insurance policy, ninety-two dollars. So, that being said, I mean, my home property is not going up. It hasn't gone up. I would venture to say, it may have gone down, but my taxes are continuing to go up substantially, in my opinion. So, I'm just here to say, as we've heard a couple other people say, that I would be in favor of no tax increase. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the bids. Mr. Vioxx.
Yes, sir. This is the problem we've had with the water entering the city building for some many years, from the rear over toward the firehouse, and we consulted with the Thelonian Associates, we did a number of studies to determine where the water's coming from, and we've come up with what we feel is the right solution to solve the problem that's occurred for many years. We took bids for the removal of the landscaping back here, lowering the topographies, so it's below the foundation. Right now, a lot of the material was higher than the foundation, therefore, water's been entering the building over the foundation and through the brickwork, because the landscaping of that area has progressed to a point where it's higher than the foundation, and we need a number of stormwater improvements in the back. Anyway, we took bids yesterday for the drainage and landscape improvements of the city building. We actually had three contractors submit bids. Return to the last sheet of the three sheets you have in front of you. The first one was disqualified because they failed to provide a bid bond, so we really only had two bidders. The low bidder is Paul Michaels and Sons at eighty-four thousand, seven oh seven, and the second qualified bidder is Lonker Construction Company at ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. Paul Michaels and Sons and Lonker have done a considerable amount of work in the city. Rick has arranged, based on the money that's in the budget and the adjustments and line items, to cover these expenses, so we're recommending the work be provided by Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept it? Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? This is to save our building, for lack of a better term.
It's not a bad price, then, is it?
It's not bad. All in favor of accepting the bid of Paul Michaels and Sons, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's done. Are there any other bids, sir?
Yes, sir.
Are there any reports of work in progress this evening, from any member of council? We have any new business for the good and welfare of our city, from city council tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
I just wanted to mention the Kramer fundraiser last week, and how well-attended it was by city officials, city employees, citizens, and just how great it was to see the Erlanger family there, supporting one of their own, and thank everyone that was there. It was a great success.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to legislation. Mr. Wickman, do you have the bottle of water to clear your throat?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you start working through this? All right, let's go.
First ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, establishing a personnel pay and classification plan for all Erlanger employees and non-elected officials. By summary, state statutes require a personal pay and classification plan, and this is the, meets that requirement, and identifies each position of employment in the city and their pay scale.
Motion be to adopt and order published. Motion from Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. I will sign the ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger ordinance number twenty-three fifty-five, and the budget adopted thereby for the city of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July one, two thousand thirteen, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. There's attached to the ordinance, the budget with the changes indicated by numbers that are being deleted, lined out, and numbers that are being substituted, underlined.
Motion be to adopt and order published. Motion from Mr. Howard, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Carries? Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, adopting a budget for the city for the fiscal year beginning on July one, two thousand fourteen, and providing that no money shall be expended by or on behalf of the city except in accordance with that budget and the proposed budget. Departmental budget is attached to the ordinance.
Motion be to adopt and order published. Motion from Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just want, since there are a lot of people here concerned about tax hikes, that is not being voted on, on the budget, that's not till September.
We hope in August, if Mark votes.
August or September is when the vote for the tax hike is. We're just voting for the budget tonight, but there's no vote on a tax hike.
Any other discussion?
Thanks, Corinne, for pointing that out. Yeah, I just want, because people don't, you know, they see it in there, and it's not, so I just want to make sure people.
It's a planning tool right now, that's all. Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes, I will sign it. The third, now we got some first readings, right Frank?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Erlanger nuisance ordinance number twenty-three sixty-one, as previously amended from time to time by identifying additional occurrences as nuisances prohibited thereby. By summary, you all will recall, we adopted the nuisance ordinance initially, we attempted to include into it a number of existing ordinances that made things, that were identified as various violations, but not as nuisances. In the course of implementing the nuisance ordinance, the code enforcement people have recognized certain ordinances that were overlooked, so they've incorporated those into this ordinance. It doesn't add any new violations, it just incorporates things that we missed in the original one. It does include as a new violation, something that's in conformity with the landlord ordinance, and that is the landlord ordinance prohibits the continual violation of various ordinances of the city by the tenants of the landlord, and this ordinance, those violations are now included in the nuisance ordinance as a nuisance, so that the landlord can be cited for the continuance occurrence of those events.
I will ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the text of section ten twenty-two A of the Erlanger zoning ordinance number eighteen fifty, to add indoor athletic and recreational facilities as a permitted use in the IP one zone.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger ordinance twenty-three sixty, to include additional specifications and the limits on the revision and redesign of the crest-borne homesites.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about this one?
Yes.
I thought this, was this the one that did not, I thought this one did not pass out of committee. I know you guys had it for comment, and then it just did nothing, you didn't comment or bring it out. What was the change on this one?
Yeah, this was the one that did pass out of committee, and we thought there wasn't any action necessary to change this. This was the one that we got, the letter from the homeowners association backing that, and those people came that night and talked about it, and said they didn't have any problem with what it was.
Okay, this was not the second one that allowed them to reopen the covenant, was it?
Do what, sir?
There was a second request from Drees that had asked them to, that would have allowed them to reopen the covenant and make some wider-scale changes.
There isn't any wider-scale changes involved in this, it's just what was in that ordinance, and that Second Amendment that was to that, the agreement. Mr. Hans here, he could, he could probably speak to it better than I can.
That was my understanding, Jim, that the, part of it, that's why, would do nothing on, and this was more like technical corrections.
Right, and, and my question was, because I know there was, there was one that was brought forward that did not have any changes in it, but it allowed them to reopen the covenant, which would have allowed them to make wide-scale changes, what some of the residents had a problem with last time, not so much that they, the change they proposed, but allowing them to open that up and make other wider-scale changes. And I was just, I wanted some clarification on that.
Well, at the, at the first committee meeting, I believe you're correct, we, there was going to be a committee meeting scheduled, and at the time, we didn't hear anything from the homeowners association, so the committee at the time decided they.
We canceled.
They didn't hold that meeting because of that, not knowing exactly what the homeowners association felt. I relayed that back to the Drees company, they went and brought it to the homeowners association, who sent us a letter saying they were perfectly okay with the changes. And basically, what it's doing is just bringing it back in conformity with the, what they originally gave to the city when the first development plan was approved.
After last change, when they made those.
Yes, yes.
Off standard houses they put back in.
Yes.
Jim, this is the first reading, we'll look at it a little deeper, make sure it is what it's.
I just wanted to get out in front of them and ask my question before we got to that point, and I was like, "Oh, no."
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, we canceled it, because there wasn't no, we figured there was no sense in having it, him come up here and talk.
Oh, yeah.
When the homeowners hadn't seen it yet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. This, I'll ask you, city clerk, to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the provisions of ordinance 2393 to delete the references therein to tenant registry and tenant information, and to delay the effective date thereof to September 1, 2014.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the most current version of the 2012 edition of the NFPA One Uniform Fire Code, a part of the permanent records of the city, and adopting the provisions thereof by reference.
And I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance, and one more.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, says establish reasonable fees for the use of the emergency medical and transportation services of the city, providing for the billing and use thereof, and those fees are included in the ordinance.
I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute the first reading of that ordinance. Now we have two resolutions.
First resolution is a resolution adopting and approving the execution of a municipal laid co-op program contract between the incorporated city, which is the city of Erlanger and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. This is an annual step that we take, the transportation cabinet provides certain highway funds to the city, and they require a contract for the use of those funds. This is a resolution approving that contract.
Is this 06, 03, 14, 01?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we adopt that resolution of mutual aid. Mr. Longshore, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This one requires, oh, I'm sorry, this requires, well, they're all here. It requires a notation on the front of who voted. So everybody here voted yes. And the mayor has signed it. Very good. One more.
Question about the next, about res, support of House Bill Number 5. Even though that, that's already passed the House, do we need to really sign, do the resolution for that purpose if it's already gone past into the House?
Wait a minute.
The next resolution that we're talking about? House Bill Number 5. It did not pass.
It didn't pass.
Yeah. And this was Senate Bill 5, and I'm not sure exactly how that would, would have got in the House. That was the one that died, it was the one that Charlotte was talking about earlier. It died in the last minutes of the legislature, I mean, Representative Kenny is here.
Adam?
The heroin bill. It's Senate Bill 5. It's Senate Bill 5. This says House Bill 5. Oh, okay. Well, yes, that's a correction.
We will correct it. It's Senate, well, it says Senate Bill 5 in the second line here.
He's talking about on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, House.
Oh, on the agenda.
On the agenda.
The actual document says Senate Bill 5.
Yeah, our agenda says House Bill 5.
Agenda, doesn't.
Yeah, the bill, the resolution here does.
Resolution does.
So that was a mistake.
They won't come up here and sit.
Here, would you like to have a copy, Mr. Burke? I'll give you a copy.
Thank you.
This is, this is an effort, a unified effort in the, in the county to ask the governor to consider maybe a special session, because they did not pass the heroin bill that everybody had agreed to, because somebody tacked amendments onto it. That one people, some people in one house found objectionable, and it died. It, I think the House, well, it died, I don't know why. It's a resolution, the city of Erlanger, supporting Senate Bill 5 and asking the governor to consider a special request, a special session, because of the heroin epidemic that we have in this area. I mean, how many, how many, Tony, chief, how many touches a day with heroin do you, do you have in Erlanger Police Department? Four or five touches a day?
At least, yes.
You know, it's just an epidemic that we have up here. And this is just, other cities have passed a similar resolution, and I wanted to get it on the, the agenda for us to consider. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. We go on record again as stating that we think that bill needs to pass, it needs to become law, so we can have some help up here. That is the end of our agenda. Do we have anything else this evening? I'll entertain a motion, we have no special session or, yeah, Tyson, this is not the time, but go ahead. Go ahead.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
I've mentioned this in the past.
Yes.
And I'm going to say again, we as the public have no way of seeing what these ordinances are, what the language is, and I would like to request that we put the draft of these ordinances on the website, so that people.
Is anybody working on that?
We did, we did. We did that. If you look on the website now, and I'm pretty sure they're on there, now wait a minute, after the first reading, after the first reading, we're putting them on there before the second reading. Okay? So I know, and I looked on there last time, was the ones that we had the first reading on, you had the second one on tonight, I know they were on there, Sherry's shaking her head. She's responsible for putting them on there.
Yes, the first three ordinances is on there. After they had.
You should be able to click on that link, and it should open it up.
I will say, we had it on there just so that you could see it, because we were having problems with the watermark. Earlier this week, we were able to correct that, and you can't, or actually, late last